I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, I will call this regular school board meeting for independent school district number 544 to order. Our first item of business, and this is not sad at all, but for last time, clerk, would you please take roll?
I'll not even mess it up. Ms. Hermes?
Present.
Natalie Knutson, Matt here. Steven Bigasaw?
Here.
Matt Limkey?
Here.
Natalie Cole?
Here.
Lane Danielson, here. We have a forum.
Thank you. I am looking for a motion to approve the agenda. As it stands, this might be slightly different than the email copy. It is slightly different than the email copy we received, so motion to approve as it is. So moved. And a second?
Seconded.
All right, any discussion on the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. All right, and this, next we'll launch into some acknowledgements. We have much to be grateful for, and we're going to say a sincere thank you to Dean and Julian Gudsmur for two tackle block boxes for Mr. Run's classroom at Kennedy Secondary School. We'll thank the Church of the Nazarene in Fergus Falls for their donation of $8,000 to support students from financially struggling families. $5,000 of the funds will be designated to purchase winter gear for students, and $3,000 will be designated toward the Otter Angel account. Thanks to William Harrington for his donation of a flute and a clarinet, to Tamara Anderson for her donation of a drum and a bell set, to Kathleen Roush for her donation of a saxophone, to Keith and Cindy Stafford for their donation of an alto saxophone. Thank you Amy Besky for her donation of a trombone, to James Hoffman for his donation of a trumpet. Thanks to the Nancy A. Carter Estate, of which Alice Speedo is a personal representative, for the donation of a trumpet, and, oops, sorry, for the donation of a cornet, slide whistle, clarinet, bugle, and tenor sax. Thanks to Lynn Stensrum, Colette Cox, Roynel Norby, and Dylan and Suzie Kuchera for each of their donations of a flute. All instruments were donated to the KSS Music Department. Thanks to West Central Initiative for their donation from the Inga M. Johnson Endowment of $3,000 for the Otter Angel account. That's the account that pays for school lunches for students whose families are economically challenged. Thanks to American Crystal Sugar for donating $1,586.91 to purchase a TIG welder for the Fergus Falls High School's modern manufacturing lab. Thank you to Inova and Delcom of Wapatin for their donations of metal for student projects in the welding program. Thanks to Minnesota Motor Company for paying all admission fees for the band choir concerts held on December 3rd and 10th, and all the December 4th gymnastics, girls hockey, and girls basketball gigs. And then, congratulations to Tom Hugus, exclamation point, his many years of coaching Otter Swim teams without by having the annual Fergus Falls Boys Swimming and Diving Invitational Tournament officially renamed to the Tom Hugus Otter Invitational. That's a lot of things to be grateful for, and we appreciate the donations. With that, we'll move on to our reports. And this evening, we'll begin with our elementary principal, Mr. Scott Colbeck, principal for Adams and McKinley, just to give us a state-of-the-state address.
Good evening. So yeah, I know that this group has been acknowledged already, but I did want to tell you about the fun phone call I received from an employee of the Nazarene Church in town here. Suzie Shonik Townsend called me out of the blue and told me about an effort from their church. And so, I think their pastor had a moving sermon that Sunday morning, and a lot of people gave, and so, 5,000 of that. And the reason they selected 5,000 is she wanted to know, how many classrooms do you have in grades K through 5? We have 50. So they wanted $100 to be given to each classroom, and then those individual classroom teachers can decide how best can that $100 be used for winter clothing. Might it be used to purchase some items that just strictly stay at school and are borrowed out to kids who need something when they go out on the playground, but then when they come back, it stays at school? Or might it go to a student or two who can just have it and take it home with them? I'm going to leave that up to the discretion of the classroom teachers and know their kids best in their needs. So, that was a fun phone call. It made me think of recently, I read in the paper, I think there was a farmer near Colfax, North Dakota, who gifted 4-point-something million to the Richland School District. So, I can't imagine getting that phone call, or maybe a letter in the mail. So, but we were very, very excited, very appreciative. So thank you to the Church of the Nazarene here in Fergus. Second on my list, I just wanted to mention about a really neat event that our McKinley staff put on for their students and families last week. It was called the McKinley Math and Literacy Night. It was a one-hour event from 5:30 to 6:30. Literacy activities, math activities set up in the gymnasium, just a great way to involve families in the education of their child. So thank you to our staff at McKinley for their efforts for putting on that evening. Tomorrow, there's kind of a neat event out at Walmart. It's called Shop with a Hero. And so, our teachers play a little bit of a role in that in that the Fergus Falls Police Department asks for some names of some students who might benefit from shopping with the hero. So our part in that is we give some names to a lady downtown named Shannon, who works for the Fergus Falls PD. And then, some students in the community will be shopping at Walmart with either, you know, a police officer, a firefighter, emergency medical person, that kind of thing. So, I would imagine, maybe in Wednesday's paper, we'll see or read something about that. We are researching, this is kind of fun, at Adams School. We got the, we got the go-ahead. It's always fun when the superintendent and business manager come and say, you guys need to replace the large place structure on the Adams Playground because they don't make pieces anymore to replace the failing pieces. And so, we're working with the company, and we're researching. And I'd like to thank Amy Newkirk and Daniela Zens, who are two of our playground supervisors. They're full-time employees at Adams School. And then also Derek Meyer, our fire teacher. I have involved them in this process. And we've been working with a nice young man named Nick from, Nick Weber? From, I think it's The Miracle, is that their company, Mark? Yeah. But with the technology that they have nowadays, they can go from Google Maps and zoom in on your playground. They can take what the new structure's going to look like and put it in where the old one is and kind of lay it out for you. You see exactly how far it will be away from some of the other existing structures. So, we're excited about that. And we keep working towards just finding the perfect piece of equipment for our Adams School Playground. We do have some Christmas programs coming up at Adams School. Next week, two classes perform on Monday, two on Tuesday, and two on Wednesday. That's our music teacher, Mr. Jacobson, leading those efforts. Some people say, well, what do the first graders do? And well, our first graders do a spring program with Mr. Jacobson. So, we're looking forward to having a bunch of families in next week at Adams School for some Christmas programs. Couple more things real quick. You know, with 11 teachers new to grades K through 2, almost half, 11 out of the 26 of them, just makes for lots of classroom observations of teachers teaching students. And then after each observation, I meet with the classroom teacher to talk about the lesson. And so, just going back to as recent as Friday, November 30th, and looking through my calendar until Wednesday of this week, I will have had five classroom observations followed up. In the next day or two or three, we try to sit down and talk with the classroom teacher about their lesson. So, it's a very enjoyable part of my job. It is a time-consuming part, but it's probably the most important part because it's all about teaching and learning. So, over the years, I've had the privilege of being able to observe some fantastic teaching. And so, for me, what that does is I learn from other teachers, which then is, better allows me to help younger teachers because I can pass along things that I have learned from other teachers. However, having said that, we should also say that we can learn a lot of things from our newest teachers that we can pass along to veteran teachers as well. So it works both ways. Lastly, I want to leave you with this. I talked with you, I think, at our last meeting about this STEAM team at Adams School, an after-school program where students meet four Mondays. And this was run through community ed this year, and we had 25 students at the first session. Again, the session consists of four Mondays, and it was just very well received. The waiting list was so long that our second session, which starts on January 14th, is already filled with 25 students. But those teachers leading that effort, I think I recognized them at the previous meeting, Jeremy Knick, John Damas, Sarah Swanson, Sue Moore, and Kim Walbutney. So we thank them for their interest and excitement with our STEAM team at Adams School. So that's what I have for you this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Principal Colbeck?
Did you say that's the big, the big structure with the tubes and the slide on it?
Yeah.
And everything else is staying, or is it just that?
Everything else will stay. Maybe updating some of the swings, but the main swing structures would stay. Maybe replacing a few of the, I guess, picnic table-type structures that are on that playground as well.
And this Nick guy must be the new rep, the, what was the guy's name before?
Dave.
Dave Leber. He's the Dave that?
Yeah. Well, Nick's been good to work with. He's come up to the school, and we walked around the playground, and he kind of knew what we were looking for, and he got back to us with this pretty nice, pretty nice plan.
Is the STEAM one in January? Is that the last one for the year since there's such a long waiting list?
No, I think, I think these five teachers would like to do yet a third session a little bit further down the road.
Do they duplicate kids? Do they let, if one child wants to go to each of the three sessions as long as they sign up? Or do they restrict that?
No, what we're going to try to do first is make sure everybody who wants an experience gets one chance at it, and then we'll see. But we know that for sure we have 50, and then we'll see what happens with the third session. But our, our approach would be that students who haven't had a chance at it yet would get first dibs to that third session. And Mary's been great to work with as our community ed director. She's very detailed, and she'll call and communicate with all of these parents and let them know where their child stands. And so, that's, she's been very helpful to us through this.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Colbeck. Next, we'll hear from Principal Timmy Run, our principal at Cleveland Elementary School.
Good evening, Tim.
Good. I just have a few items to note here, too. The week before, or the week of Thanksgiving, Cleveland began our annual community learning project, our community service project that we call Presents for Pets. And we kick off this event by having Jaclyn from the Humane Society come to Cleveland, and she oftentimes brings a furry friend or two with her. And she shares with the Cleveland students and staff what takes place at the Humane Society, how families in our community and the students as well can become involved by volunteering at the Humane Society, and answering a lot of questions about the importance of why humane societies exist, and information about pets and stuff. So it's all very interesting for the students. And it kicks off our community service project in which students and their families can bring donations to school. And we collect them right outside the front entrance of Cle- our, the front office at Cleveland throughout the month of December. And then, at the end of the month, all of the items that have been donated are delivered to the Humane Society. So, this is a hot topic for kids. They love pets, and they like to be able to be involved, and it's a great way for them to learn how they too can support things in our community and give, and about volunteering, and the importance of these, these type of places in our community and across our county. In conjunction, in conjunction with this learning opportunity, we have a special bulletin board during the month of December that we call Pets on Parade. And students are invited to bring a picture of themselves with their pet or pets and have put up on this bulletin board. So it's kind of a motivator, and the kids really, really enjoy sharing about their pets. And some of them have forgotten their pets from the Humane Society. So, there's a lot of learning that goes on with this, with this special project, and it certainly is a lot of fun. Lisa Anderson is a para educator at Cleveland, and thanks to her, she coordinates everything and arranges everything and oversees that bulletin board. So, she sees all the kids as they come through the lunch line each day, so there's some added conversation that, that takes place with all of this as well. So, lots of fun. Today, we at, we had an administrative team meeting, and we met with our special education administrators. They come to our meetings, and today we reviewed some annual data, different procedures that we carry out, got some updates on due process and related information. This certainly helps us. It gives us an overview of numbers over the course, over the course of the year. It helps us pause and evaluate our effectiveness, our accuracy, and identifying students who may need some additional services, academic and support services at school. Gives us a time, too, to just ask questions so that we, we remain up to date on any new learning that's related to that due process and special education information. Each building in the school district has a child study team or a team in which we meet on a regular basis to review student information and determine if there's a need for some intervention or accommodations, different supports that would be necessary for that child to, you know, progress educationally. So, and we really want to be effective and efficient in this process. It is a time-consuming process. It's a costly process. And so, meeting with our special ed administrators and reviewing some of this information really helps us to just, you know, take a step back and pause and reflect on what's working well, what are we doing well, and even comparisons from year to year. Our annual Christmas sing-along is scheduled to take place this coming Friday, December 14th. This is an event that's, it's really meant, it's an in-house event meant to be for students. It's not a performance of any sort, but it's a time where we get all of the sections, the sections at Prairie Wellins Learning Center, and also all the Cleveland sections together. And it's a lot of fun. The kids are singing a lot of the songs that they've been practicing in music. Mrs. Danielson has a couple of different sections that are playing, I think they're called?
Handbells.
Not handbells, but those boom things. They're plastic tubes that are different sizes, and they play different notes just like handbells. So they, they're working up some special, special tunes, too. So I think some of the kids will not know about that, and others will get to share their new phone talents with that, too. So, big thank you to our music teachers, Ms. Michelle Danielson and Mr. Dan Allender for, for planning and leading the sing-along that's going to be this coming Friday afternoon. And next Thursday, December 20th, our fourth grade orchestra students will perform their very first orchestra concert. There are 115 students participating in orchestra at this point. And this, they meet every Thursday morning and, as a large group, and rehearse. And it's always fun to hear their progress over the course of the year. And I got to stop in during a small group rehearsal about a week ago, and they are improving. They're sounding pretty good. So it's exciting for them. We, this concert takes place in the Cleveland gym, and we have just enough space to be able to invite the families of the students who are performing in the orchestra. And it's also, and we're also able to invite the other third and fourth grade sections. So, students sit on the floor, and we set up some additional seating for the families that are able to come and enjoy this concert.
What was the date of that one?
That is Thursday, December 20th, at 8:40 in the morning. We do that in the morning. They rehearse Thursday morning, so they will have had a rehearsal that morning and be all set up, and then they get to pause and take lunch count and attendance, and then return to the gym for their performance. So, it's an exciting, busy, busy and exciting morning. And that's what I brought to share with you tonight.
Any questions for Principal Run? Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Principal Monkey, our Kennedy Secondary School principal.
Hey, good evening, everybody. We've got some of the same themes going on here that you've already heard. A couple of the things, of course, tis the season to try to help out a little bit. And we've had some food drives that have gone on here at the secondary school. Our middle school kind of kicked things off in cooperation with a couple of our classrooms, Katie Heichek, Middle School Student Council, along with Community Ed. And their focus was really a food drive in relationship to our backpack program that we run across the district here, which I think Mr. Colbeck reported on is just about doubled for this year. So they just did an outstanding job, and they just had mountains of food that was collected, and yet, that was about two weeks' worth. So, it really is a huge need out there, so we thank them for that. Our high school took it from there and made their donation. They had a little contest across four different grade levels there, and the seniors won out in the end. And so, they were able to deliver about three truckloads, I believe, to the local food shelf here, which was absolutely fantastic. And then, of course, penny wars are often started as of today. So, high school, we had Mr. Tilke on the airways after school here pleading his case for more coin to come in the rest of this week. And those funds usually go towards Salvation Army and Toys for Tots programs along those lines. So just some fantastic work there by our students and staff to pull all this off. Mr. Tilke was also able to take our student council the other day over to a district student council meeting over at the New Purim High School. So, our students, along with himself, got a chance to tour over there and kind of see that new facility, along with close to 250 other area students that were there for all-day training. So, just a wonderful event. He hosted that event last year and is hoping it doesn't cycle back too fast because it's a lot of work to put that whole event together. But it sounds like they had a blast over there, meeting with other students that are, we're looking for some leadership development there, which was really good. Our registration process has started here now already, especially in relationship to making sure that we're putting together a clear and concise registration handbook for our high school students and parents. A couple of changes that we're possibly looking at for next year is having the ability to offer a college-level American government class. And also, we've talked earlier about offering more work experience opportunities and internship possibilities for some of our juniors and seniors. So a couple upper-level classes there that'll be available to some students there that want to kind of sign on for some additional challenges. So, our due date was last Friday to have all those changes proposed and in. We're going to put that together in its handbook form, get that back out to departments so they can proof those materials. It seems like no matter how long the rest of us stare at that, we can't catch all the mistakes. It's better just to give it back to those people that originated and let them take a look at it, see if they can help us with that. But then after the first of the year, that will be coming out to our students and families at the high school level so they can take some time to look through that because come the first week there in February, we'll be asking our students to register for next year already. And last on my list here is, we've got three down and three to go. That's concert season right now. So, and we've got, the fourth one is going on here tonight. And I really have to highlight Minnesota Motors one more time. That is absolutely huge that they took on all those events in relationship to paying for the gate. It really helps in relationship to our music concerts to get people in there and seated and ready to go if we don't have to take tickets at the door. So, and tonight, with our high school choir concert, is probably the biggest ticket item that we run in comparison to probably any of our events because we got a lot of people showing up for that. So, can't thank Minnesota Motors enough. Tonight, we have high school choir concerts starting at 7:00. Next Monday night on the 17th, we'll be looking at middle school choir concert, and that's going to be involving our 7th and 8th grade because we already had our 5th and 6th this last week. And then finally, our high school orchestra concert will be on the 19th. That's a Wednesday, but we're starting at 5:00 o'clock in the late afternoon. So we'll be done by 6:00, and everybody out the door. So if they have church commitments or things like that, it becomes really difficult in December to find enough dates to be able to pull off all those concerts. So, thank you to our high school orchestra students and parents and everybody for working through us to do that early Wednesday on the 19th. So that's what I had for you tonight. Questions?
Thank you. We'll move on for board reports, and starting with Matthew Limkey.
Okay, Lakes Country Service Co-op, the board itself won't meet until this Thursday, so I have really nothing to report. In November, it was just a standing board meeting, and there wasn't anything. Well, it's just a regular business meeting, that one. So, I'm one of the supporting Minnesota High School League, who was very active in December. They met December 6th, and they have some changes coming, or potential changes coming. The first one is that the board approved adjusting to the board policy regarding classifications. So what that means now is that, especially for tennis and for soccer that has two classes, they are removing the limit. There used to be a requirement of 192, a competition class from 288 to 182 to allow the opportunity for more activities to change to a three-class format. And so this should affect girls tennis, boys tennis, I don't know, boys tennis, I don't believe it's three, girls tennis and soccer. That they'll allow now be able to have instead of two classes, to have three classes. And so that allows, for example, Fergus, I just know this because of tennis, it allows us to get out of the brainards, which is three times the size of Fergus. So, that would be a good thing. And so, kind of, that's something that they did change, which is going to, you know, affect for our school district and competition for section. The other thing that they talked about was, this is, was approved by the district and now has to go to the administrative region across the state for their approval. And the majority of the regions have to approve it. But they want to add boys volleyball as an activity to the Minnesota High School League in the spring. Right now, there are 22 high schools that participate, or 400 boys that participate in club volleyball in 2018, and they want to make that a Minnesota high school sport, and this would happen in the spring. And so, it'll be interesting to see what that happens. And the other one they want to add is girls wrestling as an activity. And they had just said that there, there's about 20,000 girls that do wrestle across the United States, and so they would like to add that, and they would run it concurrently with boys wrestling. So it'd be girls and boys wrestling at the same winter sport. And so that was one of the things that they wanted to change. So again, this is going to go, but this could have an impact, again, for opportunities for students in their next, I think, couple of years, I think is usually how it goes. I don't know if it'll be next year. The other thing that I wanted to report on, too, is that they are looking at our membership fees. There has not been an increase for the past 12 years, and so I would expect that most likely they are preparing to increase our membership fees for, for participation in Minnesota High School League. The other thing I would just comment real quick because it was on the Minnesota High School League website, is for district football. And this would be for 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021. And it looks like we will stay in the same district with the same schools in our district. So we're not having any changes to that. That's not playoffs or sections that gets decided, I believe, after either girls or boys basketball, whichever is the last one. boys basketball, whichever is the last one, they come out with section assignments and stuff like that. So, but yeah, they were very busy, and some things are coming down, and it'll be interesting to see if that goes forward. So that's what I have to report.
All right. Any questions for Matt? As far as my board reports, I did not attend either the special ed co-op or Region One meetings in the past month. One was canceled, one that was gone for training, and the other two committees, finance and activities, haven't met. So picked up some speed there. Is he here?
Okay, well, curriculum review did not, does not meet in December. We meet again in January, so I'll have a report next month. But staff development met on December 3rd, and they still have about $6,000 left in that account. And it's just really great to see all the different opportunities that teachers and staff are taking advantage of to improve on and learn with this.
All right. Any questions for Missy? Wayne Daniels?
5:44 meets this coming Thursday. And for buildings and grounds, no major earth-shattering events, I don't believe. For anybody who is coming into the school the next week or so on the west end of the gym, if you looked down the hallway, there's some nice otters painting on the wall down there now, so if you get a chance to go see that, it looks pretty good. So thanks for the staff for getting that done, and it looks really sharp in the hallway there, so. And then Meet and Confirm met November 27th. And a big thing there, of course, was working on the calendar for 2019, 2020. And I think they had a couple ideas thrown out. Looks like potentially they'll be getting a two-week break at Christmas, I think. And then also did some work on, that'll be the year for the music and choir trip also, so they're working that in there. And then the one other thing that came up had to do with PLCs and some higher absenteeism. So how to deal with that and working on setting some policy to deal with that going forward. So that was kind of the two biggest things, I think, out of the Meet and Confirm.
Any questions for Blake? On buildings and grounds, is the proposed playground redo on the school district's dime, or are we getting a donation or a little combination thereof?
You're talking the Adams one? That'd be ours.
Okay.
Long-term facility maintenance dollars.
Great. Thank you. All right. And Steve and Pegasus?
Okay, so Minnesota School Boards Association put out their legislative, what do they call it, legislative agenda, things that they want to lobby for the legislature this year. And there's eight of them, eight big ones, but I kind of want to just touch on the major ones that they are looking to do. So a big one is the, is the general education funding formula. They want to make it less complex. And that's something that our governor is wanting to do as well, and to make it kind of fair across the board. They also want to kind of build in like a standardized increase of like 3% every year to cover education funding. And also, they want to include kind of inflation protection thing for a per pupil basis, which just makes sense. I mean, costs go up, the funding should go up too. I mean, that's just, that's just how math works. So the other thing is they, you know, the special education funding thing is becoming more and more apparent that the state is not covering what they said they would do, which is 40% of this education cost for special ed. And I feel like that's going to just continue to get steam, or whatever the phrase is, to be taken care of. I mean, it's, I think it's time to fix that. They also want to focus on, you know, having schools offer more mental health services, which makes a lot of sense. And it's something that I think needs to be done more in schools anyways. I mean, I mean, most people could benefit from seeing a counselor or getting some sort of mental help, even if you think you are a quote-unquote criminal, there are still things people deal with, and I think that's great. Let's see, they also want to fully fund, you know, because we submitted applications for grants for some school safety dollars last year. And Mark, do you remember what we got, if anything, up? We didn't get any. So what they're, what they're hoping to do is to say, hey, let's fund the rest of these, let's fund the rest of these requests, because it's, I mean, it's school safety, it's really important. So that's something that's going to be on there. And then others, kind of a small thing, but you know, we actually went through this as a district when we had to fill Daryl's spot, where a lot of people don't really realize that when you have to hold a special election to fill a school board member's spot, it's actually a cost to the district, several thousands of dollars to fill those spots. And it's just, it could save the district up to, say, $20,000 by just appointing someone to. So there's a lot of things out there that are very expensive, but how do they pay for this? Well, there's projected to be a $1.544 billion surplus in the 2020, 2020, 2021 school year. As we know, that can always go down, they can find ways to spend money elsewhere. But, you know, it, I have a feeling, and this is just me talking, that, you know, with the governor of this area, education focused, with the way the legislature's changed direction in the last election, you know, maybe this, a lot more could be funneled towards education, just with some of the places that they've neglected in the past, so. Mouthful, but that's, that's about all I got from that.
Any question on the proposed agenda from MSBA? All right.
Just a comment on the school board one. 60,000 is real, that was six board members that got replaced in one district.
In a special election?
Yeah, and they replaced six, so trying to figure that one out.
Putting something in the marker. Matt, where was it?
I don't, I guess I might know it's in our, I don't know where it was, but I don't remember. Just remember somebody's talking, but southern, yeah, southern Minnesota.
And another comment about that too is that with these special elections, there's very low turnout as well. So you got, you got all these, all this money going towards this election that nobody votes and votes for, when it could be used on children and education like it should be. So it's kind of a good deal.
All right. Superintendent Ness?
Yes, I have a few items here. Part of our mentor-mentee program is at the, the last Wednesday each month, we have our mentees come in and train them on a topic. We've had, how do you refer a student to, for special, for special education services, for example? So we, so we work with them, because even if they're a veteran teacher, but they're new to Fergus Falls, we might be doing things a little bit differently. So we've had, as an example, the special ed. This last one, Kerry Thompson said it was one of the finest ones that we've done, I was not able to attend, but it was a panel on classroom management. And really allowing teachers to explain, you know, veteran teachers, how they are working with our, with the students and what they're doing, just little tips and techniques, and then what's, what they're able to do then is ask questions with this. So thanks to our panel there. We've had a couple mentions of the Otter Angel account, and this, this account is used for students who don't have money in their account. And, and what happens is, we have students that are qualified for free or reduced. Minnesota, a few years ago in legislation, they pay for all those suits, so a hot lunch program, all of, all of those dollars are paid for free or, and reduced, I should say. And so those are not the students that are accessing our Otter Angel account, we get full reimbursement from the state. These are students that, you know, for whatever reason, and I won't comment on that, there's many reasons why their parents might not have money to be putting into their account. This helps them through, this allows us to make sure that every child receives a hot lunch. You know, it doesn't work with the à la carte line, however, but it does, they're directed to go to the hot lunch line. The Otter Value Meal worked. So just, you know, it is just nice $6,000 tonight that we thank people for. That really helps replenish the meal in my column this week. So far this year, up to today, we've used it 447 times. So that's an average of about seven times a day. The rumor out there over the weekend on Facebook was they're not allowing us to use the Otter Angel account, and we're trying to reframe that issue a little bit here. We're definitely using the account for the intended purpose. So thank you very much for contributing that account. The Heritage Building, we're going to dive a little deeper in our work session on that. There's a hand out there, but we're working towards completion of the, of the plans. A little bit different, we're kind of going to stay where we're at on the west side of the building versus going over to the east, because the playground will be right behind that, and we'll be able to work with that, and that's, that's fine. And, and the, Tim Wagner is the owner, and he's been very, very good to work with on how we're going to build it out, and Children's Corner is going to be next to us. It's Otter Preschool and Children's Corner are two separate entities, but yet we'll be working together closely, is probably the best way to do that. A little bit of the, we, over the past few months, we've talked a little bit about a gifted and talented program, and, and, you know, Steve attended the national conferences and I did for a day. The new terminology is more of a talent development program, and we've had one meeting so far. And right now, I was unable to attend, but really what we're trying to do is, what are we currently being funded for? How is, how are the fundings being used? What are we doing now in a class? And so we're just sort of getting a baseline data, and then we'll be able to talk through if, if changes are needed or what we'll be doing. So we'll be continuing to look at that. Our next meeting is on January 7th, 5 o'clock in this room, in the Otter Community Room. And then January 18th is coming up shortly, and, and that will be our in-service for our staff. And we are doing, Dr. Jill Amundson will be coming in, talking about mental health and working with our staff. And then also just, you know, all of the things that we need training on, there's, there's things, we have TIES training, so we have, a number of staff are at the TIES, which is Technology Conference right now. They'll be coming back and reporting that and presenting them what they've learned. And we've got some tweets and emails back from Jesse already on that. So those are the things that I have, and I think we're kind of at the time, are we going to go to our hearings right away?
Yes, we will.
Okay, so Mark will be on that.
All right. Just any, quickly, any questions for Superintendent Ness on his report? Then I'll suspend our regular board meeting, and we will move to our public meetings. We have two public meetings scheduled later for 6:00, 6:00 PM, and we just have a couple minutes until 6:00. And, and the purpose of that, breaking with this meeting and adhering to the timeframes is further courtesy of our published times. And I am, because we've invited members of the public, and I don't see anyone adding to the meeting, but should we begin? We have two meetings to cover, one being technology plan and internet safety policy meeting, and then the taxes payable meeting will follow. So, are you ready to go, Mark?
I'm almost there, I just got to get this screen, so he can do the internet safety now before 6:00.
Okay. Very well.
That one's very easy.
All right.
The internet safety piece was developed many years ago at the infancy of the internet coming into our school districts. This hearing was designed to make sure that the school district had a plan to implement this technology into its schools, and it also was to reassure parents that we were appropriately filtering out content, primarily pornography, in our schools. Well, many, many years passed, and it's become very commonplace, the technology that we've put into our schools, it really doesn't need a plan anymore. We, we used to have like a 40-page plan, it's now down to a few paragraphs that the state wants to see, and they haven't asked for a new one in about three years. So, but the requirement for this hearing remains. And yes, we are still filtering, we have a filter that is updated by an outside source on a constant basis. And yes, pornography is removed off of our network. However, keep in mind that technology has also changed since this requirement came in, and students, especially at the high school level, have figured it out, that if you can't get it through the school network, you just go offline and go on to your cell phone network, and you can get all the content you want. So parents need to be aware that that can and does occur. And more than likely, if your child has seen something nasty at the school, it's because they are not on our network.
So, yes, so for clarity, the filter doesn't occur in the airwaves, it occurs on the device, correct?
It, it happens through our network. So everything that comes in through either wire into a computer or wireless through that box, as long as it's our network, it's filtered. But if you go to a cell phone tower with your personal device, then it is not, that is outside our realm.
Got it.
So if they connect to Sprint or AT&amp;T or Verizon on their own?
Basically, if they turn wireless off and back on their cell phone, they...
There are, there are programs parents can use, one that works really well, it's called Tubbin and Eyes. It just tracks everything that happens on the phone, if there's anything nasty, like you're saying. Parents know that that happens, that conversation with the kid. It doesn't necessarily block the phone up from bad things happening, it's more putting it on the kid. So there's, there's things that parents can do to help monitor that activity off the wireless network, but that is a, that is a problem.
And we will, we will advertise, Jesse Thorsted Technology Innovation is doing a program in January for parents, and all about access and filters and different things. Like he's doing that for mid-January.
All right. Very good. Any questions or conclusions on our internet technology public meeting? Because now it's time to call for the taxes payable meeting for 2019, and so I will again turn to you, Business Manager Mastin, to enlighten us. This is the meeting where we invite the public to support or detract from the board's ability to tax citizens, where we have made public what we're doing. So.
Ah, that's better.
All righty.
Well, this is a sheet that I prepare every single year for the last, I don't know how many years, it's been a long time. It just shows what, in one column here, the fiscal '20, that's the next school year coming up, FY '19, fiscal year '19, that's the one we're currently in, 18, '19 school year, the dollar change and the percent. And I think most people, when they got their tax statement this, this year, they probably noticed a large increase for the school district. There were three reasons for that. One I will take as my own problem, and that's going to get corrected tonight, and that I keep punched a number into a new student information system, and instead of 3,001, 3,014.4, I punched in 3, 3,14.4. So there was an extra 300 kids, and that shot up our taxes by about 325,000. That is going to get corrected tonight by the board. The other two reasons that property, our taxes will go up is property values are going up. And if you, school district taxes are often, are very related to students and property values. And as property values go up, the amount of taxes that you pay go up faster in many cases. That doesn't necessarily mean that the school district receives more money, because a lot of these items are tax and aid, and so if your little tax, property tax goes up, your state aid goes down. And not only that, but the formula is such that if you try to lower your tax, you will then also lower your state aid. The state wants you to, to do the maximum. And that's kind of the situation we're in. Kirby brought up to me a article that was found in the St. Paul Pioneer Press, and it's an article that says, here's why your property, '19 property taxes bills are so... bills are so high. And all across the state, home values continue to climb, not only recovering from what they lost during the great recession, but gaining more ground because of a competitive real estate market. And this is statewide. In fact, if you go through the article, there's a, another paragraph right here that says local levies are on the rise for, on average, school districts are at eight point one percent. So that, that's, it's not just Fergus Falls, it's all over. In fact, uh, this is the county taxes. But here's the school district taxes. And the darker color means they're going up higher, faster than lighter colored. And you can see Fergus Falls, which is right here, is a colored item. And that's at fourteen point seven. If I go over here, what school district is this? Oh, that's been an error. Let's try this one.
I like the ones.
Probably so high that it's not showing.
We're the only one.
Yeah, but you get the idea, is across the state, taxes are going up. Eight point one percent on average for school districts. Um, the other item that's causing our taxes to go up is our lease levy. You'll see a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And that is because of the project that we've been working on, that Jerry alluded to earlier, on our Early Childhood Family Education Center. Uh, that lease and improvements to that building will come out of there, uh, and will affect parents and, uh, provide them a very unique situation within our community. So, in total, our taxes will go up six hundred and forty thousand dollars, which is nine and three-quarter percent. That's less than the fourteen point seven that originally was up there. Uh, again, that corrects the error that, uh, I mentioned. Uh, for comparison purposes, in fiscal ten, that's ten years ago of taxes, uh, you'll see that the tax was six million two hundred thousand. Our, the tax burden, if you will, on our property was thirty-three point six. We're at thirty-two point four even with this amount that we're, we're mentioning. And the amount that I'm mentioning here is just shy of seven point two million. And if you take that six, two million from ten years ago, apply the labor statistics of Consumer Price Index, that's seven point four million. So the number isn't outrageously out of line of what inflation is, it's just that people are seeing a very large increase in one year and I can understand that. I'm going to show you one last thing and this is a chart. The chart has three lines. The green line shows what we call net tax capacity, adjusted net tax capacity. And way back in ninety-five, that was eight and a half million. If we go up to here, you can see it's at twenty-two million. And it's a very long sustained climb in the line. You'll see there's a dip right in here. That is because of that great recession people were talking about, property values went down. Well, we've not only recovered, but we're starting to expand. The next line here that I want to show you is the, this black line. And you can see that way back in ninety-five, our net levy was four million, four point six million. And we're looking at seven point five, but along the way, we've had six point two, ten years ago, even going way back to oh-two, it was five point five. That line you can see is some, staying somewhat level. And keep in mind during this time period, we had bond referendums. Thirty-two million dollar bond referendum for our buildings here, plus over in here, we had another increase for the outdoor facility. Both of those items were voted on by the public. The red line is kind of like looking at the price of gas over time. So in other words, if you have this much gallons of gas that you're pumping over time, while our tax rate was fifty-six percent, fifty-six point seven. Then during the Ventura years, they dropped it down to twenty-one percent, the great big buyout. We had our bond referendum, brought it back up to thirty-four. It started dropping again down to twenty-six, then back up to thirty-three percent, uh, when we did the outdoor facility. And then it's been slightly declining since until this year. But again, the thirty-two point four that we're proposing here is pretty much the same rate it's been since oh-nine. So yes, it, it is a large increase. There's not a lot we can do at, at the school district to correct it unless you don't want to do the expansion of the early childhood program, which I think we want to do. But otherwise, uh, the error that, uh, was in there has been eliminated with these numbers. And, uh, that's where we're at.
All right.
So Mark, for the public, that correction you made, that will, they will see that reflection too for the, for the tax you're coming up with.
Correct. Because originally it was, uh, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars higher. It's seven point one nine one. It has now been reduced and, uh, to correct that error.
Yep.
Do people get an updated tax statement then?
Yes, yes. The county, when they send out their tax, that will, yes.
All right.
I, I will also add that if we had not corrected this, there are mechanisms in place that next year it would have automatically corrected. So if I had been hit by a bus between the time this started and tonight, then it would have been corrected.
Okay. Very well.
All right.
Good. Questions on our taxes payable?
Well, if you're going to have a vote on whether...
But thank you for taking a lot of, um, a lot of numbers and boiling it down into something that's fairly comprehensible for the public. I really appreciate that. And with that, um, lest anyone object, we'll move back to our regular board meeting. There are no objections. We're going to move on to our general, what, general consent. And, um, so on our general consent agenda where we will consider several things for a vote, at the same time, we have the minutes from our November meeting, uh, which was held November nineteenth, and then the bills and treasuries report. And so who, uh, will report on that?
I will try to do that.
All righty.
Thank you. So, um, I, yes, I met with, um, Mark this afternoon before this meeting and, um, we had, um, an imbalance, uh, in our investments of, um, two hundred, about a little over two hundred thousand dollars in cash. We had about eight point four million dollars. And that's down from October. Um, and the reason for that is that's when we get, um, uh, money from Otter Tail County and so then, uh, we start paying down. The lowest point in the year is normally December thirty-first, so that'll be reflected in the next treasuries report as well.
All right. Very good. And then, uh, our, if our HR manager could cover the personnel?
Sure. Um, we have certified teaching staff resignation of Tricia Grove, um, our IQ special ed teacher. And, um, replacing her will be Diane Anderson. And then a little bit later on, down in new business, we're requesting two additional special ed paraprofessional positions due to, uh, the transition of new students, um, and their needs, meeting their needs, um, at our Cleveland and Adams School, along with two hires of Rachel Mavis and Madison Difordine. And so that'll be under new business.
All right. Good. And then the last item for the general consent is, uh, looking for approval on the two thousand eighteen, uh, two thousand twenty agreement between the school board and the title of a paraprofessional. So with that, is there a motion to approve the general consent?
Soon.
And a second?
Second. Oh, go ahead, Blaine. I'll say it.
All right. And then, uh, any discussion on these items? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, so we have, we have, um, a pass on the general consent items. Under old business, last meeting, our business manager presented the school district's financial audit and gave a review. Um, and then we had access to it last month. And so, uh, I'll entertain the motion then. Is there a motion to approve our fiscal year eighteen financial audit?
Soon moved.
And a second?
I'll say it.
All right. And any discussion, um, on the audit? Any prepared statement by the business manager? Anything to add for that?
Nothing new. I haven't heard any questions from anybody, so.
All right.
It will get posted now, now that, or for example...
All right. It will be on our website. All right. Any comments?
Just in, in general, Mark, you know, a clean audit, uh, do you just want to do a couple of those highlight bullet points, please?
Yes, uh, just, uh, basically, uh, a very clean audit like we've had in the past. Uh, the fund balance went up about a hundred thousand and, uh, I think, uh, maybe the ad went up by more than that in fact. We had many years where we were in deficit and now it's nice to see positive and, uh, we're just, uh, it took a long time to get there, but we're there. And that's, that's a lot of people, like I said, at the last meeting, that it took to, uh, to get to that point.
Yeah. Very good. And, um, and I'll, uh, note Matt's page, page ten of the audit, which one is online. If you fast forward to that, I mean, it's got a lot of, um, it's got the full transparency, full audit, but in terms of understanding our, um, district finances, I think it's really beneficial for the public to see that, uh, the same refrain we've said time and time again, that all school district financial situations are not created equal, not even close, so.
I will mention one other of those stats, is we used to be the seventy-fourth largest school district in the state. In terms of population, we're now at seventy-two. So that, that, that's significant because for years we've been dropping and now we've turned, turned that around as well.
All right. Any other commentary or questions before we, uh, take a vote? All in favor of approving fiscal year eighteen audit, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And the audit is approved. I would look for a board member to propose a motion to request two additional special ed paraprofessional positions, uh, one for Cleveland and one at Adams.
So moved.
All right. And then a second to that.
A second.
Okay. Any discussion? Thank you for recording that and, um, and note that, uh, the staff's been, the staff's been delineated and so that is also, uh, part of what we would be approving. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. That is approved. And, um, here we'll do a little bit of fanfare. Um, this is a resolution thanking Blaine Danielson for his years of service to the Fergus Falls School Board. Whereas Blaine Danielson began as a school board member for Fergus Falls Public Schools in January two thousand fifteen, whereas Blaine has been a valued school board member with Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past four years. And whereas Blaine has done an excellent job as a school board member for the district and now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board, is thank Blaine Danielson for his four years of dedicated service to Fergus Falls Public Schools. Would someone offer the resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution and move for its adoption.
And a second?
I'll say it.
All right. And, uh, clerk, would you please take a roll?
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Steve Vigassal?
Yes.
Matt Limkey?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Blaine Danielson?
I'll say yes.
I was going to say no, so I'm just having one no in.
I really think you should have been saying, but...
Resolution passed.
Very well, thank you. And with that, um, Blaine, we, uh...
Yeah, we get a picture here.
As a board, uh, had a plaque prepared for you to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And what's really cool is it's got a picture of us on it.
It does. Yay.
So, um, I would just say that, um, Blaine, you've been a very valuable member of the board.
Yes.
You've, um, worked well for the citizens of the community and always had the heart of the students right in the forefront of how you proceeded. It's really been a pleasure working with you.
Appreciate that.
And I'm going to miss you.
Appreciate that.
All right.
All right. Both look here now.
Cheeseburgers.
Perfect. Thank you.
And, uh, Matt, thank you for helping coordinate and Elaine for, um, making sure we had the plaque prepared for Blaine.
Can I just say something quick too?
Yeah.
I just, I just want to feel honored. I am honored to have been able to serve on here, uh, for four years with this group. It was a learning experience, that's for sure. And, uh, but, you know, hopefully I, uh, I had a small part in, in some things that we've accomplished, uh, the envoy program, the mentor mentee program, uh, the school growth is great right now, seeing financially, we're sitting well. And, um, to Matt and Melanie, you both, uh, were, were a good mentor, mentor to me. Um, I pick your brain a lot, ask you guys a lot of questions and I thank you for that. And, um, to Jerry and, and Mark and Blaine, um, our district is lucky to have you guys. And, uh, we're, we're, uh, the districts of this, our voters of this district should, uh, should, uh, just realize that the work that you guys put into this and this district would be where we are today without your guys' hard work, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Moving back to the agenda, I'm looking for a proposal on item number three under new business, um, a motion to, um, have Lakeland Mental Health Center agreements with our district and, uh, four mental health practitioners effective from January first to January thirty-first of two thousand nineteen.
Soon. Oh, sorry. Soon moved.
All right. And a second to that?
I'll say it.
All right. Any discussion on the Lakeland Mental Health Center agreements?
Is this a standard from last year? We didn't update or anything like the current?
Two percent.
Yeah. I mean, percentual, but we didn't add a position or anything.
Correct. We did not.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, it's been four positions now for quite a few years.
Yep.
All right. But the number of students was, like, can be served by these four people is...
I think it's in the works for next year, we'll be looking at additional staff needed.
And the majority of...
It's starting, starting, uh, started the next school year.
For sure.
Yep. We, we, I guess, uh, as long as we're talking, um, right now we have a split between Adams and McKinley and we're really looking to have someone at McKinley, someone at Adams, someone at Cleveland, and then, and then the remaining staff here.
And my understanding is that this is, this is not the only, uh, organization that can be here for, for another family's using, say, solutions or something else, I mean, that...
That is, that is correct.
These are for the kids that are not being served.
We do not have an exclusive agreement, uh, with anyone. Yep.
Has to be, go through all the steps then.
Oh, yeah.
All that, but, great. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved. Student trip request, France, June eighth through sixteen, twenty twenty, as, uh, reviewed by Deb Suter in our last meeting. Is there someone who's willing to make a motion to approve that trip?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? Bearing none, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved.
Wee-wee.
Yes, I said wee.
Wee-wee. The next energy, uh, agenda item is agreement between our school and design intense architects for the interior remodel of the Heritage Building and, um, this contract was proposed. And, um, in our packet, is there someone who will make a motion to endorse that agreement?
Soon moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the contract? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, very good. And item number six is a lengthy item. It's a resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating the hours during which the polling places will remain open for the voting for the school district elections, which are not held on the same day as a statewide election, which, of which we have none proposed. However, this is a mandatory resolution and we will, um, uh, review this. I, it is my intent only to, um, uh, summarily... I, it is my intent only to summarily read the last part. Is that okay?
That's fine. And there's no changes from our same resolution as of last December in 2017. It's just an annual resolution. The only changes are the proposed polling place changes from the city of Fergus Falls in there.
So, in a nutshell, if you will, when you go out to a general election, there's twenty-four different election sites. Is that correct, Blaine? Twenty-two to twenty-four?
Yeah, because they're changing again. They're, they're, some of the precincts are combining again.
When we went out, for example, for our long, our outdoor facility, we combined it down to eight polling places. And that's what this is, exactly the same thing. So, we, it's an annual resolution that you have to do, and that's why.
And rest assured, if we actually put vote before the voters with these combined polling places, we will reiterate what they are for purposes of this meeting. We'll read just the summary and note that the entirety of the resolution will be on the website with our minutes. Is there, and so, I'll read this, and then we'll see if there's any further discussion. So, I read the title already. Be it resolved by the school board of Independent School District, number 544, State of Minnesota, as follows. And then, it gives indication pursuant to the statute, section 205A point one-one. Then it goes on to say about combining the polling places. And then, lastly, ending paragraph says, "As required by Minnesota statutes, section 204B, point one-six, subdivision oneA, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to give written notice of the new polling place locations to each affected household with at least one registered voter in the school district whose school district polling place location has been changed. The notice must be non-forwardable notice mail at least twenty-five days prior to the date of a first election to which it will apply. A notice that is returned as undeliverable must be forwarded immediately to the appropriate county auditor who shall change the registrant's status to challenged in the statewide registration system." So, will someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution and move for its adoption.
All right. And is there a second?
Second.
And any further discussion? Any clarity needed on this? Then, back to you, clerk, for roll call vote.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Blaine Danielson, yes. Matt Lemke?
Yes.
Steve Vigasov?
Yes.
Mr. Hurees?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
All right. Very good. And then, is there a motion to approve the levy for taxes payable for 2019?
So moved.
Is there a second?
We haven't.
Does it say a dollar figure or just a percent?
If you got the dollar figure, it's seven million, one ninety-one, something.
Nine thirty-two, forty?
All right. Rewind.
Seven million, one ninety-one, nine thirty-two, twelve?
Twelve?
Okay. So, rewind. We did have a motion by Steve.
A second.
Oh.
Blaine? I mean, motion.
Yeah. Okay. So, we got a motion and a second. And now, the, we'll add the information that the dollar figure was also presented as part of the motion. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. So, any discussion? This is pursuant to the information we got during our public meeting. Hearing no questions or comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. That is approved. We're going to have a little work session concluding board's activities tonight. And our next school board meeting, we'll start with the reorganizational meeting on Monday, January fourteenth. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn? All right. And a second?
Last time, I'll do it.
Yay! All right. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.